Call the meeting to order those that care to please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance to Mr. Cameron.
Let us pray. Let me follow. We just thank you for this day. We thank you for this city and just thank you for the people that make it up. I just pray, Lord God, that you would continue to show your favor upon this community. You give us guidance and wisdom and direction in all that we do and all that we say as we take up the issues of the city. And, Lord, we just thank you for the freedom to vote today in this country and the freedoms we have. And we just thank you that you give them all to us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I feel like we were just here. I'd like to start off with opening the podium for citizen participation. Any citizens here wishing to speak about something not on the agenda, please approach the podium. State your name and address, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Come on up, sir. Just state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Richard Hobby, and I live at 222 East Hadley Street. And I'm here to just, a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Saunders got up and said, "Why are we having high-density housing?" And I thought, "That's a subject dear to me," because I grew up in the country. And East Hadley Street is considered, I believe, medium-density. And I would even prefer to be living maybe in low-density. But I guess I have a question for the members here. Why so much high-density housing? I know there was a poll that was cited that said people prefer it, but who were polled? Because the people I know want more elbow room. On Hadley Street is medium-density. If you cross Main Street and go over to West Gray Street and Monte Cristo, it's high-density, very high-density. So my question, I have a question for you, and then maybe another comment. Why would you want Republic to be so jammed up? Why not let people spread out? It seems like you have room. Why have so many people living so close to each other? So that's my question. If anyone would care to give me some kind of an answer.
Well, I appreciate the question. In this setting, what we let citizens do is show up, voice their concerns. We don't answer a lot of questions because we're caught flat-footed. So if you ask a complicated question like that, I guarantee the engineers and planners in the room could not answer that in a minute thirty-four seconds responding. But what we could do is we listen to your concerns, and we can certainly set up a time to discuss that in more detail, and we'd be glad to do that.
Okay, then, just a final, thank you for that.
Of course.
Just a final comment. One person talking. I'm sure there's all kinds of different voices going in different directions. But from one person and a few people I know, I would ask the council to think about, what kind of a community do you want? Do you want people living in low-density housing, the way I would prefer it, or high-density? So I know you just passed some resolutions that allowed for some high-density housing. But I guess I would ask you to think about carefully what the long-term effects of that would be. Too many people living too closely together, I think it might not be so good for Republic. Just something that I would ask you to think about when the next possible development comes up, that you say, "Gee, maybe it's time to go with low-density housing and not allow so much high-density housing."
I very much appreciate your time. If you would like to leave some contact information with Laura, we would be glad to follow up with you.
Okay, Laura?
Yep.
Should I do that now?
If you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing nothing, citizen participation is closed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items number one through five are on the consent agenda. I ask everybody to take a moment to look at those items. If there are any questions, we would entertain any questions from council. Seeing no questions or comment, I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Announcements of boards, commissions, and committee schedules. I'm at the age I have to take my glasses off to read things. It's starting to bother me. Board of adjustments meeting on April 7th, 2022 is canceled. The planning and zoning meeting on April 11th, 2022 is still on. City council meetings on April 19th and May 3rd. Moving on to old business and tabled items, this is item number six on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-12 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 0.94 acres located at 221 East US Highway 60 from local commercial C1 to general commercial C2.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haynes was here last time, presented on this issue. Any updates or comments from the city? Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I will now need a motion and a second for the final passage of 22-12, and we are going to be doing this on our computers.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Ordinance carries six to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-13 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 6.30 acres located at 6021 West US Highway 60 from agricultural AG and light industrial M1 to heavy industrial M2.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates or comments from the city? Any questions or discussion from council?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of 22-13.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-14 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of 6.02 acres located at the 4100 block of South Farm Road 103 from local commercial C1 to general commercial C2.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of 22-14.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item number nine on the agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-15 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in, I think that was a second. That was like half a second. Are we counting that as a second? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council amending Title IV Government Code, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Article 405-1, Section 405.020, definitions, 405.150, C1, local commercial district regulations, 405.160, C2, general commercial district regulations, 405.165, C3, general commercial district regulations, and Article 405-5, heightened area requirements, exceptions, and modifications.
You've been practicing that.
Oh, boy.
Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of 22-15.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Get bifocals.
No. Need to borrow some?
Yes.
Man, I got bifocals.
I'm gonna have to move that way. Focus. Yeah, motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item number 10 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-16 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council amending Title VI Government Code, Chapter 600, Business and Occupation, Section 600.010, definitions, 600.020, license required, classes of licenses, 600.030, license regulations, 600.040, schedule of licenses, 600.050, application for license and renewal, 600.060, minors, and 600.070 miscellaneous offenses, and adding new section 600.015, application of Missouri state statutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council?
No.
All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 22-16.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
So quiet tonight.
It is. I'm sorry.
I think I turned the air down too much.
Now it's too warm now we're all tied.
I was really cold.
Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item number 11 on our agenda. I need to go faster, apparently it's too quiet. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-17 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council authorizing the city administrator to execute a cost-share economic development agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the expansion of a portion of Route MM, Brookline Boulevard, between the Interstate 44 interchange and the Route 360 James River Freeway interchange.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city? Any questions or discussion or comment from the council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for a final passage of Bill 22-17.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to new business. Item number 12 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-18 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council approving the final plot of the Lakes at Shula Ridge Phase III subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Assistant Builds Administrator. The City of Republic's Builds Department received the final plot application for the Lakes at Shula Ridge Phase III final plot on February 25th, 2022. The final plot will legally divide approximately 19.8 acres of land into 62 residential lots. It also includes the dedication of right-of-way utility and stormwater easements. The final plot includes approximately 3,260 linear feet of street and 3,520 linear feet of sidewalk. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none, please remember that this is a, oh, I'm gonna ask this. Any citizen comment on this issue? All right, seeing none, please remember that this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 14 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-20 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council approving the final plot of the Old Savannah Phase III A subdivision.
Thank you. The final plot of Old Savannah 3A will legally subdivide approximately 5.94 acres of land into 18 residential lots. It does also include the dedication of right-of-way utility and stormwater easements. The final plot includes 1,234 linear feet of street and 1,213 linear feet of sidewalk. Staff is recommending approval of the final plot.
I'm afraid I've messed things up. I got it confused. All right, so we're on 2219, and that's the slide for 2219, right?
I think it was delayed in switching over when you were reading it.
Gotcha. All right, so technology wasn't keeping up with us. Totally my fault. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, so we're on 2219, and this is about the Old Savannah Phase III A subdivision.
Correct.
Excellent. Questions from council? So this looks like similar structure to the stuff around it as far as spacing?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion from council? Please remember that this is a first read, so get with council before the next council meeting for any questions. Moving on to item number 14 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-20 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council calling an election on the question of renewing a city sales tax for local parks to fund Parks and Recreation general operations, designated the time for holding said election and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice to the county clerks of said election.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, I feel like we've talked about this before.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared Keeling, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm not gonna go into nearly as lengthy as it did in the workshop, but I do just wanna give the recap for the people watching at home. So this particular one, there's two on the agenda tonight, both of them calling for action of proposal election in August. But this one is for our local parks sales tax. It's a 1/4 cent city sales tax. This one is dedicated exclusively to fund our park operations. So they're at or around 918,000, this sales tax generates in 2022 pays for 27% of our operating expenditures. So vital to our operations, vital to our Parks Department, and we are seeking to place this measure on the ballot in August.
Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I've got a question for you. And just, a lot of my questions have somewhat been answered in the workshop.
Sure.
My biggest concern now is there's a lot of stuff that was presented tonight in the workshop that I have not been able to talk to constituents with yet. And so this being a first reading and being the night where any constituents are allowed to speak, I'm looking into the timeframe of it, and I know you had mentioned the last possible date to have this ready in order to get it on the ballot. Could you refresh me on that date?
So I don't have it, it's May the 24th.
May the 24th.
So whatever the second meeting would be in May, and Laura, that would be correct, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I know I have the meeting dates in front of me, but that would be the last possible thing. We have to have it to the Green County Clerk by the 24th of May.
By the 24th of May?
I believe, is that correct?
It'd be May 17th.
And so with that in mind and looking at the date of our next two council meetings, I think we can fall in line with that. And so I'm looking at considering a motion to table this so that we can talk to the constituents before they lose their only opportunity to address council. And so I didn't wanna get ahead of myself above the questions, but I just wanted to make everyone know that at this point, I think I want to make that motion.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you are making a motion to table this item?
Making a motion to table this item until the council meeting on April the 19th for a first read.
So there's a motion on the table to table this item till the next meeting. Is there a second for that motion? I don't hear a second for that motion, so that motion will die, and we will not table the item. Mr. Gurk.
To clarify, this, what we're doing here is to present it, if we accept it next time, that it would go to the voters to renew it.
Yes.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Jared, is, this may already be on the website, but is this available to residents to look at or something similar?
Yeah, so we wanted to wait till tonight.
Okay.
So after tonight, it was effective tomorrow morning, you will see the entire packet on the website. In addition, we will go to social media as well and just put it out there. But you will be able to go to a landing page. Jennifer's already prepared it with all the information on there. And one thing I forgot to say in the workshop, and I forgot to say again, if I said it already, I apologize. These are, most of these things here before you tonight are renewals of existing sales taxes. So there are no sales tax increase. If they were, happen to get renewed, they're obviously not increasing our sales tax rate here in Republic. There's zero sales tax increase. There are renewals of existing sales taxes.
Do these sunset?
So the one that we're talking about now expires in March of 2024. The next one on the agenda expires in September of 2024. That's the reason we're here tonight before you, because as you can imagine, it just takes a lot in the planning stages to get the projects rolling. But also, we wanted to make sure we give enough time just to give ourselves, in case they should happen to fail, we would maybe go out to do it again. But yes, they do sunset, Mayor, to answer your question. Now, the one on, for our park operations is interesting. That one probably could be argued as to the why it would ever sunset, because it would be hard to imagine a city without parks. But for whatever reason, 1990 and again in 2002, they didn't opt to, they opted to put a sunset on it and a cap on it. So, but what's presented for you, before you hear this evening, is it comes with a 25-year sunset on this one and also the next one, so.
Other questions or discussion?
Well, I was just gonna say, the reason I did support the motion, I feel like the voting in August is the opportunity for the residents to speak in favor or against, in my mind. So I'm excited for them to have the opportunity to see this and see all the excitement and all the work you guys put into it.
I love, I love that you asked that, because we've got it all queued up. But we, we wanna make sure that you guys see all the stuff first, and then once you see it, we'll go to the public with it tomorrow, so.
Other questions or discussion? All right, we will look forward to the second read of that next council meeting. Moving on to item number 15 on our agenda, this looks familiar. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-21 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council calling an election on the question of renewing a city sales tax to fund Parks and Recreation capital improvement projects, designated the time for holding said election and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice to the county clerks of said election.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Keeling.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, as a point of clarity, can the people at home see the screen? Okay, so as we're going through this one, I want to take a little more time. If we could just highlight the project, that would be terrific. So this one is dedicated to strip, this 1/4 cent sales tax in the city is dedicated exclusively to park systems capital improvements. The people of Republic voted in in 2003. The primary thing, even on the ballot, was we're gonna build the Aquatic Center, but it also said we're gonna do other capital improvement projects with it. So yes, we did build the Aquatic Center. We opened the doors in 2005. It's the nicest one in southwest Missouri, was the nicest one, and still remains the nicest one in southwest Missouri. But in addition to that, we've been able to do a lot of other really cool things. The Republic Veterans Memorial, the amphitheater, we went out and procured additional parkland, Brookline Park, 44 acres, Owen Park, nine acres, the new park last fall of 135 acres, pavilions in our parks. We've leveraged our local sales tax dollars with federal dollars for grants in Owen Park, Miller Park, and JR Martin Park, and those are just to name a few. So not only did we do the, so what we said we were gonna do to the voters in building the Aquatic Center, but we did all those other projects with the additional revenue. So this particular tax for capital improvements, this time around, what we're pledging to the voters, and this is a result, is what the voters have said they wanted. So the top three we've heard for the last three or four years, in no particular order, are expansion of the Republic Aquatic Center for, to include a lazy river, the development of a large sports complex, and that's why we purchased the property last fall, and then a community gathering space, amphitheater, adjacent to the amphitheater, Farmers Park within JR Martin Park. So I would, do you wanna take a moment just to show the renderings? What you're seeing on the screen now is the renderings of the three projects I just mentioned, but Chris, if you can scroll down just a little bit further. So expansion of the Republic Aquatic Center, that would be immediately east of our existing facility. So there shows where it would potentially be expanded. The next slide shows from an aerial plan view of what we have in mind, a 575-foot lazy river. It's 10 feet wide, and in addition, we're proposing to add two slides, one tube slide and one speed slide, and splash spray zero-depth entry would be our second one at the pool. The first one is tremendously popular and usually tremendously crowded. And then the facility down there towards Miller, towards Miller Road would be an additional guard room, filter room, and concession area. This is just the conceptual design, the artist rendering of the expansion. I love this. I think it speaks like this is a cool place to be. We're gonna utilize the existing elevation change from our existing facility. You can see that at the top of your screen to create these terraces. That, these terraces would be someplace where you would just go to chill and overlook your family members in the lazy river. On these terraces, we're proposing to add cabanas, pavilions, just as a common area in between the old, the, what's known as the Republic Aquatic Center now and the expanded area. So that particular project, today's dollars, we believe we can do for around 6 to 7 million. Facility was originally built in 2005, and this is just really to keep what we have regionally. We have the market on outdoor aquatic cities, especially on municipal side of southwest Missouri, with really not even a close second, in my opinion, just because of everything that we have. But this would blow everything out of the water, and this is what we desire to do on the Aquatic Center, but this is also what we've heard from our community as to what they would want. There's just a few additional renderings there. The next one is development of the sports park. As I mentioned before, we were able to purchase this part of property last September. 136 acres, we're gonna develop 125 of it for a large regional park that would feature a sports complex. We wanted that feel of it's a park that happens to have a sports complex to it. The total build-out, if we were to do it all, which we, we would not have the funding to do it all, but the total price tag would be around 32 to 40 million dollars. That has a mile frontage on James River, features 10 baseball softball fields, eight soccer fields, pickleball courts, trails, fishing ponds. I think that's about everything, but a dynamic park located adjacent to James River of 125 acres. Now, what we think we'll be able to do, what we know we would be able to do financially-wise would be a phase project. So phase one would be approximately 12 and a half to 14 million dollars, and it's illustrated there on your screen. But we'd be able to accomplish five of our baseball fields, four of our soccer fields, pickleball, a large common area, and just some green space area in that fishing pond up in the top left-hand corner. Again, a couple of artist renderings of phase one. And a lower-level entry of the grand pavilion would enter, everybody coming to the complex, baseball, softball, and soccer would enter under this grand pavilion, similar to what they have in Elizabeth Town, Kentucky. The last one, this was actually the one that was ranked the highest amongst citizens in the last citizen survey, was a reimagining, if you will, of JR Martin Park. We started this in 2014 with the amphitheater, but we wanna turn this park into a modern, hip place to be. It already is, but we wanna go next level with it. What we already have there is tremendously special. Have a blast. Pumpkin days. Kiwanis even desires to be over there. But what we wanna turn in that vibe into an every Saturday vibe, or every weekday night vibe with a farmers park, nonprofit events, local small concerts, if you will. And then one of the biggest things we desire to do here is turn this thing, we're gonna nickname it the Loop and call it the Loop, a half-mile trail that from Thanksgiving to the first, Thanksgiving past Christmas to the first of the year, we wanna turn it into a holiday lighting walkthrough extravaganza. We already get a tremendous amount of people that visit that park right now, and our investment hasn't been that large. But what we wanna do is turn it into something uniquely special and cool for Republic citizens, but really for southwest Missouri. We do believe it could create a good amount of tourism to our city. They come for the holiday lights, they stop by Flat Creek, they stop by Annie's, they stop at any other restaurant and eat. And then we would, we desire on Friday and Saturday evenings to have food trucks there as well for everybody to enjoy. So the large-scale picture and build-out of that one is 3 to 4 million dollars. What we're proposing to do is a phased approach to this project as well. We do believe our Public Works crews can help us a lot, especially on the upper area where the asphalt is, so that'll save some money. But phase one construction is around 1.5 to 2 million dollars. So in summary, and there's a couple of artist renderings there of JR Martin Park, but in summary, if you total all those three projects up, I'll let Chris catch up here. Sorry, Chris is going kinda fast. So they total at or around 20 to 23 million dollars for those three projects. Now, those are just those three projects. If the sales tax would generate additional revenue, we would again come back and either complete the additional phases or pick up additional projects, and there's been a few mentioned here tonight that we've already thought about, and one of those would be potentially including a dog park. But those are the projects that we've heard from our citizens that they want. Those are the projects we desire to bring about. They total 20, 22 to 23 million dollars, doing phased approach on two of them. And Chris, if you go to the next slide. So this is a conservative estimate on what the sales tax would generate. Starting from the base of 1.15 million in 2024, assuming 2% growth, which is again is fairly conservative growth, we would be able to, what you see on the right there... we would be able to, what you see on the right there, doing the borrow amount of anywhere from 20 to 23 million dollars. And what you see on the far right there would be our annual payments for the PNI payments, principal and interest payments on the 20 to 23 million dollars. So what you have seen tonight is attainable through that existing one quarter capital improvement sales tax. It's completely attainable. You never know, with the favor of the city, we might actually outperform those conservative sales tax growth estimates. We might be able to do more or we might be able to take on a few more projects that the community wants, a dog park. And I'm figuring a couple of other off the top of my head, but we might even be able to do some of those smaller projects as well. So this is what the capital improvements one is all about. This one takes a little bit longer because you're dealing with mega projects here. But what those mega projects could mean to this city is exponential. We are in the business of doing the absolute best we can for the Republic community, but we're also in the business of creating tourism and sports tourism, other kind of tourism. The aquatic center tried and true is 55% non-resident every year. We're proud of that because those people come to our city and they spend, they spend money, which helps us spend tax dollars, but also creates a lot of excitement to our city. So I think the excitement is there. Mrs. Mitchell asking the work session, do I believe that we would have the backing? I believe our public trust our park system, I believe they have confidence in our park system and we're ready to go after these projects. So with that, mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
And again, I'm, my main concern, this is all a lot of great stuff, a lot of great ideas and very exciting. But again, this is the only night that citizens have to speak on this ordinance. Learning all of this information right before city council, I understand that probably no one here will agree with me, but I still am in agreeance to table ordinance 22-21 until the next city council meeting of April the 19th, 2022, so that we may have an opportunity to present this information to the voters of the city.
So is that your motion to table, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to table, is there a second for that motion? Seeing none, that motion dies. Any other questions or discussion from council? Mr. Kirk.
On the debt scout you'll have here, clarifying, we talked earlier, but we have other projects we funded through debt and that, that those debt payments are going to be satisfied and paid off as well.
Thank you, sir, I did highlight that during open meeting here, but you are absolutely correct and I apologize for that. But so the reason we're here before you is A, because the taxes are expiring, but also because we have debt expiring. So we've been waiting on this day for 14 years, if you will. So this year, 2022, we pay off the Republic Aquatic Center, it's a big year for us. And next year, we pay off the Republic Community Center. We also pay off our last remaining payment on the land we bought last fall. So we are going to end 2023 completely debt free in parks and recreation. Now, it's been a long time getting there, but what you do in the parks and recreation businesses, once you pay off debt, you go into more debt as long as your community wants the projects and also as long as they have confidence in you. So we are set to assume more debt if this should go through to bring about the three projects the community has told us they want through the citizen surveys, so.
And Jared, I'm assuming that there will be educational opportunities for residents to come here about this so they have an educated vote in August?
So from May 1st, we've already got all on the calendar, but from May 1st to August 2nd, you will see every piece of possible information you can see out there, including open houses, including on our websites, including social media. But we welcome that, we've already scheduled, what's I'm so excited about, give me the date, Joanna? So April, April 20th, assuming this council should ultimately go through with this vote. On April 20th, we're going to give every athletic coach we have a sneak peek at the, a complex. Just so they'll feel like, like, hey, this is, you know, we're part of this or whatever. So we're excited about, so if that tells you anything, on the 19th, we hopefully will pass this. On the 20th, we're going to hit the informational campaign. But we will not be lied in that, as ever been as active we were in the public safety sales tax, we'll probably multiply that by two just because we have a lot of resources graphically, gifted graphic people, but also people that are passionate about what they do. So they will go out and hit our coaches, they will go out and hit the pickleballers, they will go out and hit the people that are participating in our programs. But all that information will be readily available. I would envision we would probably have at least two open houses. But to your question, we've already actually had two when we do through our master plan process. And people were asked to come in and put dots on boards and like give us their input of what projects they wanted to see. And these are the three projects that they voted on overwhelmingly, so.
So this one, this is not going to take them by surprise that they're going to, we're asking for renewal.
Yeah, our, our, I can only speak to interactions we have at the community center and out and about at our stuff. But our athletic staff has already told me we have a lot of people inquiring about it. Because when we bought the parcel last fall, we came to open meeting and that, that caught wind of it. There's a tremendous amount of excitement to it, there just is, there's just a buzz in the community. And if one thing we've heard about the aquatic center until I was almost like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna put it on. The thing is people want to see an expansion in a lazy river. So and that, the Martin project though, and I'm a Parks and Rec guy and I love everything, but actually that one's probably the most exciting to me because that's going to create that sense of community and that really cool vibe that we are lacking here a little bit in Republic. But we want to create that space similar to what happens Saturday mornings on the south side of town in Springfield for those farmers markets or similar to the Bentonvilles. You go downtown Bentonville, there's just a vibe there and we want to try to create that in Republic, so.
Okay, last question on that note. Should it pass? Is this, is all this going to happen at the same time or does one project hold precedent over the other?
So that's a great question. We, we actually visited with the schedule at the meeting tonight. So in order to bring about a potential opening, I'll start with the aquatic center. In 2024, we're already up against it, like if this passes in August. So that's what, we would want to do that. The Martin one though, we might be able to get started fairly quickly because we also want to pursue grant funding. So we haven't got all that figured out in full transparency. I would say at minimum, we would be looking at the, because we have existing debts we have to pay off with our tax in 2023. This new taxes start in 2024. So we would probably be looking at a potential borrow in late 23 to begin construction if nothing would change right now in late 23, early 24. So I know sometimes like I would be one of them, like I voted on this, where is it? You know what I mean? But we're going to have to go through a little bit of a process through the design and construction. But by 2024, if we could have two of them done, I don't know if we'll be able to have the sports park done quite yet, but if we could have the Martin and the aquatic center done, that would be awesome, so. Did that answer your question?
Mr. Mayor, so was the 25 year sunset, was that just to make sure that it was able to stretch out and fund all of the different projects?
Correct, yeah.
Totally in total?
We looked at 20 and 25, Mr. Franklin. We ultimately thought it was a little bit more comfortable with 25. We've actually funded fire stations here for 30, we didn't want to get into that long. But the 25 year seemed to be the sweet spot. Now, I, I don't know if there's penalties involved in paying these things off early, some of them carry them, some of them don't. But that would always be a potential, but the 25 years allowed us to get to the borrow amount we wanted and still a reasonable amount of payoff time, so.
Gotcha. So what would the difference between like a 20 and a 25 look like?
I did not have them run that anymore, but I certainly can. She ran the three of them for me today, but I can, I can give that rant for you.
Okay, sure, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Kirk, is it more of a procedural question? If this was to not, to not pass the next time in there, does the sunset would just take effect then and it would not go to the voters? Is that correct or how does, how does that work?
At this level, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So if, if you all should as a body decide not to put it on that, it would, it would sunset in 2024. The one I spoke of previously would be in March and this would be in September, that's correct.
Thank you.
If they were to sunset and we don't put this on the ballot, what happens?
So, great question.
I mean, it's, I hope it doesn't, but what happens?
For the capital improvement projects, it's pretty straightforward, we're just not going to do any of them, we just wouldn't. For the other one, and I was asked this question today by the media in KY3, there would be some difficult decisions because it's 27% of our operating budget. So what, what would that potentially mean to our department? Well, we'd have to look at every single thing we do and like where can we cut? We'd also have to look at raising user fees. So that's, that's like a really hot topic. Right now, we are at the average to maybe a little low on user fees and we are extremely proud of that. However, if this would happen to pass, our user fees would probably go up substantially. And that is a little bit scary for me because I, we take a lot of pride in everything we do being reasonably priced. And we, we compare our rates regionally all the time, we are right about average, but we wouldn't want our user fees to get out of control. The other thing we would do would be to potentially have to look back at cutting back on scope, cutting back scope on programming and cutting back on scope of upkeep of facilities and parks. And I don't want to say that out loud because it hurts, but we take a lot of pride in how things look and we have a good amount of employees to take care of things. But ultimately, those cuts would have to come somewhere. So the question is real, if they would should happen not to pass or if it would happen to die at this level, we would have to take a good hard look at how we're going to trim $918,000 out of our operations, so.
So I'm going to ask some pretty specific questions. Daddy daughter dances, do they exist if this doesn't go through?
So daddy daughter, great question. Daddy daughter is funded by user fees fully, but like things like Have a Blast, things like Easter egg hunts and I always forget the other three or four, but those do not pay for themselves. Have a Blast alone is about $70,000. We'd have to look at it, I mean, but you're, that's cutting at the core when you're talking about Have a Blast. Have a Blast is a thing this community takes a lot of pride on, but those are the things we'd have to look at. I can promise you one thing, we are not overstaffed and I will not ever allow our department to be overstaffed. We have good workers, hard workers, but we would have to look at everything we do, including staff. And that hurts to say, but this is, it's the reality of it, so.
Mr. Mayor, and, and I may have missed the, the portion of this, but so if this passes, probably sunset September 2024, would the 25 years then start at that September 2024 on to the next?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so it wouldn't start immediately or over?
Yeah, that's correct.
Everything would follow through and then the new one would start at 2024?
Yeah, again, a renewal of an existing tax, Mr. Franklin, which, which I can't say enough, and thank you for pointing that out again. This would be no tax increase. So for this particular one, it expired and set, will, is set to expire in September 2024, this would just be continuing that tax on for an additional 25 years. Our current sales tax rate is just a hair over nine, it will remain just a hair over nine if these two should happen to renew, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Franklin? Mr. Mayor, you had, you had touched on staff, staffing being an issue. Is that any kind of concern to you, once we do get these new complexes? I mean, things can change. I know right now it's really difficult for anyone to find help.
Sure.
So based upon where you're at currently now and filling all the staffing positions, do you see or foresee an issue with trying to get people? I know there, there's a big number of that that is high school and younger, which makes me feel a little bit better. But are you having, good luck this year with that same demographic?
Yeah, we're living in the challenges right now. If you talk to our athletic staff who's back here right now, it's a challenge right now. However, I hear them every day working the phone, so we're able to make it happen. But to your point, we are, I would have to thank the largest employer of high school and college age workers in the area. But also some of the things that our staff is looking at and like I say these things out loud and I, it's just like, it's crazy, but our staff is looking at them because they're progressive minded is they're looking at, what do you call those mowers that? Robot mowers, robot painters and, and they're serious too, I mean, they, they went and looked at them. It's just crazy, but those are addressing staff shortages. What we have though, and I don't say this to be conceited, but we have a coolness that like people want to work at the aquatic center. They want to work helping children learn baseball, softball and soccer and things like that. So we always have that going for us, but we have to make, remain competitive in our pay as well. Minimum wage has gone up every year for the past two years, it's going up to $12 next year. We try to remain competitive with our competitors. As you can imagine, when you're going up and down 60 and you see $16 an hour starting, that doesn't do us any favors. But what does do us a favor is it's cool to work here. So we've always got that going for us and that helps a lot, I mean, it helps a lot, so. But staff shortage, Mr. Franklin, is real though, yeah.
Everywhere.
Robot mowers.
Robot mowers. Robot electricians?
Yeah.
Mr. Kim.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, the point I was going to make regarding the debt services, should it pass in August, bringing up the 20, say it was the 25 years, we could go reissue new debt now to the investors and to those, those places where we'd be borrowing the funds and package the deal as to go ahead and start issuing debt on the new number because you could demonstrate that it was going to be there for another 25 years. So we would actually start packaging a new deal together on how to borrow the money to start the project sooner rather than, than waiting. So by going now allows us a chance for the designs to get done, us to work with private donors along with working with the banking community to come up with a package that we could initiate these a little bit faster. But it gives some assurance once it passes for them to move forward with implementing it right now, it's just a big dream.
Mr. Go ahead. I didn't interrupt it.
No, you're fine.
Just one more question, so on this particular one, the second, what was the history behind this one that said already been through one renewal?
Sure, no, this one actually was new to Republic, voted on in November of 2003. It was, at the ballot claim, which was specifically worded for capital improvements primarily for the aquatic center, but it also called out for other things if, to, to generate additional sales tax revenue. So that's what the people voted on in November of 2003 and this one sunsets in 20 years.
So then everything originally promised to the voters back then has been satisfied up until this point?
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I would probably argue that we've, we've, we've really done a lot with it. And I don't say that again, but I, I think like if you just look at attendance at amphitheaters, if you look at attendance at patrons at Brookline Park, if you look at Owen Park, right there in the middle of East Republic with 18 million houses, those have been tremendously well received amenities to our park system, to our park system, but to our community more importantly. Everything we've done with that extra money has been wildly popular and we're really proud of that, we really are. Especially locating those parks in areas where you need it now, Brookline Park with staff's craziness sometimes. Archery out there and more to come with dinos and Bigfoots and stuff like that. That place is becoming the place to be, it really is, it's a nature park, it's great, but we're so glad we brought that to Republic as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Jared, so that slide that has all, whatever the slide was, it has all the additional projects. It's way back there and I hate to do this to you, but I'm just curious, how much of those were funded with the additional revenue right there?
The answer to your-
Other than aquatic center, so the AMP at JR Martin Park, Republic Veterans Memorial, Brookline Park, Owen Park, JR Martin Park, Miller Park, and even part of the new park, are those, are those additional projects that were, that exceeded what were told to the voters in 2003?
The answer to your question is all of them. All of them came about because of this capital improvement sales tax. If you run the numbers, since the tax went into inception in 2004, it's generated at or around 9.4 million dollars. If you total everything on that screen right there, it's around 8.4. And we didn't, we didn't put some of the minor projects on there. Like there's a really cool playground we did at Miller Park, which we're a desire to do more. That, yeah, I guess that is on there, but the answer to your question is all.
I think that's a very powerful slide because it demonstrates you use the money for, in addition to what you told the voters it would be due.
Thanks, sir. One thing that's not on there, just I could, Bourbon White, we, Bourbon White Baseball Softball Complex. We've, we've really done major renovations to that facility over the last 10 years. It's still a little bit odd, like I said during the work session, there's 14 foot of elevation drop. But when you walk into that facility and we get told all this, because we host tournaments there, people want to rent it out. It's a nice facility and we also use these tax dollars to upgrade that facility, so.
Mr. Kirk.
Clarification question. So you have a conservative projection of what the sales tax revenue would be?
Sure.
Excess funds would be used for?
Additional projects or phase two of these, these projects that we've said. So as you can imagine, through citizen surveys from now, for 25 years from now, we're going to throw out new ideas or we're going to be approached by, hey, have you ever thought about a dog park? Or have you ever thought about a BMX track? Or have you ever thought about a skate park? So we're going to listen to our citizens and if we have excess money, we're going to, that's what we would do with the funds. However, there, there are two of these projects, those phases. So we want to, we want to complete those phases too, if possible, because they're designed upon full build out for a reason, to create that impact that we want ultimately, so.
Are they required to be used for, in the parks department or are they able to be used for what, for any purpose, the excess funds?
So in the ballot, it is earmarked capital for us exclusively for parks, so it'd be exclusively for parks.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Great job.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I know you've been on your feet all night, you and your staff have done a wonderful job putting this together and we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Please remember this is a first read, get with staff before the next meeting if you have any questions. Moving on to item number 16 on our agenda, this is 22-22. I need a motion and a second for the second, for the first reading of bill 22-12 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero, madam clerk.
In ordinance of the city council, authorizing city administrator to execute a participation agreement with city utilities and various other surrounding communities as part of a regional broadband initiative dedicated to extending broadband high speed internet services to Republic and surrounding areas.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you doing this?
I'm doing this one.
Do it, good.
Quick.
Because this, no, no, this is important, this is legit.
Well, Jared took all the time. Jared's is more interesting, it sells, don't you know? So, so this is, I want, first of all, I want to thank the, the mayor and council for convening last week via Zoom to have the, the meeting to approve the MOU, appreciate our, our legal counsel, Megan helping us with drafting the MOU, being a, being kind of at the forefront on the legal team as well as ourselves on the administrative discussions of the broadband, working with CU to approve the MOU to get us started. Just to give you a little bit of an overview of why the MOU or why this board, what, what we're looking to do is to create a coalition of communities, Green County, Christian County, to represent the groves, the Walnut Grove, Ash Grove, Fair Grove, Green County is representing their interests, Strafford, Willard, ourselves, Nix, Ozark, Springfield is already being served by CU on their broadband network through SpringNet. And so Christian County, and again, I've already mentioned, mentioned Ozark and Nix. So basically, it is a collaborative, similar to like what 911, so all the cities in this area. So all the cities in this area several years ago moved from having their own dispatch offices for police and fire. So we used to have a dispatch office right outside this, this door that we had dispatchers that would dispatch PD. So that was all consolidated into one 911 system. And so that is essentially what we are doing as a region is building a group that would address broadband on an overall scale versus as each individual silos. A lot of this is driven because there are, there are a several billions of dollars flowing through to address broadband in the country through the American Recovery Act or ARPA. And so not taking advantage of those opportunities collectively versus each individual city going to their, their legacy provider and trying to work those issues out, which we have. I will say this, I've been asked this question. Have you approached your own legacy providers to work with this? We have met multiple times, had conversations about the need to improve speeds and broadband in our community. Our business community came to us right early in my tenure with the city saying, what can we do to improve the speed of internet in this community? And so we, as a government provider, I mean, it's not something we, we provide or control. We cannot really go to the legacy providers and demand that that happen. And so we've had those conversations, but now with the, the introduction of federal funding and the emphasis after COVID of addressing broadband in the country, this is something that has come to the forefront, not just for us, but for the rural areas as well. And so we found a partner in CU that has deployed this in their own city. And so this is the best way. This is similar to the Ozarks Transportation Organization. For those that do not know, we're a member of that. We serve on that board. But again, it's, it's made up of Green and Christian County, Republic, Ozark, and all the cities in the region. And that's how we distribute transportation dollars. So having a collaborative effort in approaching, be it Washington DC or approaching Jefferson City Representatives in any way is better as one cohesive region with far more leverage and more power, just as one voice and one, one unit pretty much saying we have this, all this same need is, is very much, we're very much behind it. So our, our value in the city of Republic says that we will be regional. And so when this was presented, we became an active member. We are the first city, I believe, to even be considering this board on our agendas tonight. And so with that, either myself, and again, I want to commend our legal counsel, Megan McCullough, who's done a fabulous job taking care of the legal pieces for me. So I work on the administrative pieces with the, the other members. But this is very important to our region. I think this is important for economic development. I think this is important for our citizens. I've definitely heard about this. If I heard of anything other than traffic at Main and 174, it would be regarding broadband and the speeds in our community. So I'm not going to promise what that would look like. What I can tell you is, Councilman Mitchell, you asked me timeline, I think, on the Zoom call. With this, what it looks like, I'll just give you from a deployment perspective is over the next 90 days, what you do, just like we would do if we're going to build a highway through the, through Republic, we would consult, we would put out a SOQ for consultants that would analyze what it would take to build that highway. That's the same thing. You go out looking for someone, says, we've packaged all these cities together. We have this many households that we could potentially serve. And these people that, these organizations that deploy these efforts, it takes about 90 days. It's going to take about 20, you know, we wanted to be done by the end of April with all cities agreeing to the, to the RBI board. It will establish bylaws in those next 90 days. But what we'll do from here, we'll deploy or ask for, request proposals. That'll probably take 30, 60, 90 days. And then the board will select the highest qualified. So once this board is established, we'll be a voting member. We'll be selecting who will do that study. That'll probably take, I, I don't want to give a timeline for that right off the bat, but it is going to take some time to go out and see what the market provides for the provider. Then they would put together what it would cost to provide broadband. And so what I would hope to see is the overall cost coming back to this, or overall plan coming back to us in six to nine months. I would say that our, we put in this ordinance not to exceed amount of $60,000. Our proportionate share of the overall cost, say, I believe is almost seven or eight percent. So it would take a lot to reach 60,000 on this study, but I think it's worth the money to evaluate this need for not only Republic, but for our region. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Is there anything about this ordinance that would prevent our legacy providers from bringing broadband into Republic?
Not at all. I mean, what this is, is this is us evaluating the opportunity to create a holistic approach for the whole region. And it does not exclude them from adding additional resources to increase speed or add infrastructure. They have the same access to ARPA dollars. And for, and in some situations, you may actually see the legacy provider partner in the actual deployment. So you might find that they say, hey, listen, we're going to come alongside CU. So you could see one of those step up. I'm trying to think what, and I, I'm sorry, it's eluding me. Who is Springfield using as the actual deploy? I mean, SpringNet provides a service, but there is CenturyLink, SpringLink, SunLink, something. It's one of those. But anyway, they, they, they work with, with someone that is there that could actually, that provides that in, end of line service. And so I believe that there'd be a third-party partnership or part of all of that as well. That's a great question.
Other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, so Mr. Cameron, on this board, seven members. Who is our representative on this board? Would that be you?
It would be myself. What I would suspect that I'll ask is that, just like we do with the OTO, that I'll ask the mayor, it'd be the mayor or his designee. And so basically I serve on the OTO board at the pleasure of the mayor. Most, some, most of them send the administrators. And so I would highlight, it'd either be myself or Mayor Russell or someone else. I mean, if a council member wants to serve on it, we could also probably do that as well.
Sure, I was just kind of curious that I figured you, you're who I was assuming. My other question on that, is there anyone else that's able to join this as a partnership? Or is this pretty much everyone in Green County that's going to be a part of it?
That's a great question. So I would say anytime that you can, because I believe, I mean, personally, just to my core, I believe in regionalism and I believe that includes Branson. I believe that can, I mean, anything that's a part of our overall economy needs to have the opportunity if we can. So it's not going to be inclusive, I think that, or I think we'll be, one of those places where we would allow people in if that conversation takes that route. I mean, I would love to see just a overall Southwest Missouri. I mean, I grew up in Miller, so naturally I'd love to see it go all the way to Lawrence County, where I grew up, my parents would have it. You know, my mom would stop complaining. She's probably watching. But anyway.
Maybe not. It could be lagging.
Love you, Mom. So anyway, so I, I believe that anything that we can do to make our region and this whole area better collectively versus having each, because you've got some smaller locations that just cannot, I won't use the word lobby. Oh, yeah, I will. So I mean, they just cannot go and do this. So they need voices that can collectively work together. And I think that if we can do that, you know, whether they say rising tide lifts all ships. So I think that that helps for every small community that's, that should have access to broadband. So yeah, I believe anyone could come alongside. And I think that as long as we can continue to have that spirit of cooperation and I commend CU for doing that with us, I think we could bring in a lot more.
One more question. So then would, would that board select the chair for that board? Or is, would Springfield be the chair of that board or how?
No, great question. That's a great question. I appreciate the, the, logistically, I think that probably it would select the board, kind of like we do with the OTO board. And because we haven't established the bylaws yet, this is just commissioning the establishment of it. So it's a great question that I will bring a copy of the bylaws back that you would see. I don't believe we have to adopt them. I think we will vote on what that would be. But what it would allow is like probably what it would, I would almost believe it'll be similar to the OTO, which has a rotating chairman. So like certain cities have more votes. And so like Green County is the chair of the OTO board one year. A city Springfield representative is the chair. And it kind of goes to Christian County and it kind of just rotates around. And I, I would, I would envision there'd be a rotating chair each year that would, would alternate, would be my, would be my recommendation. We are, we are trying to mirror the efforts of the, this board to the OTO. So if you want to look at the bylaws of the OTO online, or I can send you a link to that. I think it'll be a great kind of comparison by which we will try to emulate in this board.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Cameron, did this collaboration form because our legacy providers weren't willing to get us up to speed quick enough? Was it out of necessity to kind of get us going?
How are you going to answer this?
So we've had, I'm going to say this politically correct, but at the same time, we've had great partnerships with the legacy providers. However, when it came to talking about increasing the broadband speeds or addressing those issues and we're bringing them into the meetings, the challenge was real. So when it comes to deploying those efforts, you've got to have 100% buy-in or otherwise it's not worth it to them. So, you know, some of them still have coax cable running, you know, the little copper wire that, you know, you had to kind of turn off and run to the back of your TV and keep it there to have cable TV when you're a kid. It's still, this is not working anymore. And so I think that, but if they're going to replace that line and down a street and there's 100 homes, they're not going to get, it's just like trash, it's like trash service noise. We'd all like to have one. I guess most of people have six or seven options. Well, if you don't get to capture the whole market, it's hard to go and deploy the very expensive, I mean, it's a very expensive effort. So I think their struggle there is because you've got multiple providers and who's going to be able to capture the most market has always been a little bit difficult for them. But I also think that probably our growth has probably caught some, maybe more like, wow, I didn't realize that it was going to go like that. And so now the market has gotten very, is larger and faster and growing and there's a more, there's a larger market to make money. So we gave the chance, we met with those meetings and I want to say that they were very good meetings. It's just, there was no momentum to change or make those adjustments. And it was more about not making much, they just didn't see much of a market. I mean, Andrew was, was in part of those conversations, our builds administrator. I just don't recall anything that ever left us saying, this is going to improve. And so what brought it about was a funding mechanism became available through that, through ARPA that, and that there was an interest at a federal level that suggested we want to deploy this. And so this was the chance for us to, hey, CU's done this before. Because see, I will say this about dealing, working with CU, is I approached CU early in my, upon arriving in Republic to work on, working on how to get broadband out into the Brookline area because it was, it was somewhat deficient to the new businesses we were trying to locate. So my concern early on was we have water sewer street out in Brookline, but we do not have an ample supply of broadband that would support, say, an Amazon or a convoy. And so basically by partnering with them, we began to start deploying into that area, working together. I think because of that effort and partnering with that, it brought it together more like, what, what can we do to leverage that even though it's a city-owned, Springfield-owned? So navigating around those pieces brought us together and seeing how they could work that out in Republic. And so that's really what kind of brought us together is we just, I like to believe that we, we, we like to initiate those opportunities and be a partner with them when they become available. And I think that's what happened here. Funding became available and the partnership had already existed to, for us to have those discussions, that it really just kind of really came together. And I, I'll say this in literally a week. And then it's just began to build momentum more and more and there's just a lot of excitement. And I'm just glad to be a part and, and leading in that effort to help, help make it come to fruition the best we can. Yeah, she, you want to speak to both of them? Just you can state it up to the record so I can hear it.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
You asked a question about the board members and the chair. So, so it's actually in the agreement. And so aside, barring any material changes, which we don't expect there to be, the, under the agreement, there's going to be one chair, there's going to be one vice chair. Each one of those will be selected by the members. They have to be a member also and then they'll rotate on a one-year basis.
That's right, yeah. Gotcha. Thank you.
Pretty close to what he said.
Okay.
You got, you got it on the spot on.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just happened to scroll by it at the same time.
Lucky.
He's already on top of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from council tonight? All right, seeing none, please remember this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting if you have any questions. Moving on to number 17 on our agenda. That's right, right, yeah. Number 17 on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22 dash 23 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to enter into a direct loan agreement and promissory note with Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation for $4.2 million in funds to be used towards the highway MM expansion.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Nelson, builds administrator. So this is part two in a three-part series of MM expansion. Council recalls item 22 dash 17 was part one, our cost share agreement with the State Department of Economic Development for $6 million toward the highway MM expansion. So part two is covering the local funds. We're utilizing the Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation funds to cover our portion locally. I say that we're taking out this debt as more of a cash flow than an actual debt. So we're obligating STBG urban funds through the OTO to this project. So we're using this loan to pay for the project, expedite the process, and then those funds will be allocated to the project over time. That's a little bit confusing.
What is, what is STBG for the people that don't know the acronym?
Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding, I believe.
There you go.
Don't quote me on that.
You just made that up.
No, we didn't. And he's right on it.
I've said it enough that.
He's looking at me like, why would you ask me? STBG. Well done.
So anyway, this portion is the financing. What that really does for us is provides the cash flow to do the project, expedite it, and then leave our local cash alone so that we can do the transportation priorities that we have locally. The third part of this, and council will see this probably on the 19th, is an IGA that we'll have. I'm stealing his thunder just for that. There's an IGA with Green County. They're also obligating one and a half million dollars towards this project.
Is this standard procedure? Is this how these sorts of things get done? Or are we, are we plowing new ground here?
It's, it's a little bit new. I'll say that this started in probably 2020, probably a week after we found out that there was a little building called Amazon going out on MM Highway. I think we knew then, aside from the improvements that they were willing to make, you know, they invested four and a half to five million dollars in MM Highway. We knew we were going to have to make our own investment in the MM long-term. So we started those discussions with the Department of Economic Development, MoDOT, OTO, of how we can partner to expand MM specifically from James River to I-44, where you know, we, we neck down to two lanes in front of, I think it's in front of Ashley Furniture and Murphy Tractor and those areas is really tight right now. So that started in 2020 and, you know, coordinating on that level with so many government entities, it takes time. So this is kind of the, between these three items that council will approve over the, the next two meetings. It's kind of the, the finish line to get to design. Construction schedule, we're looking at probably starting late '23, early '24, and then finishing up in '25.
Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Mr. Nelson, did you say that the, the local street fund, the $300,000 or approximately $300,000, that was, is that per year? Or that's one, one $300,000 chunk out of?
In total, our estimate right now is that locally, out of our street fund for the $10.2 million project, we would obligate $300,000.
For all, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Good work.
Other questions? Mr. Mayor, it's not to belabor the point, but you asked a very interesting question. I think that, that on this particular, and I, I think I just want to stop here for a second to, to discuss. I think sometimes in the development of all the things that are going on, the question is, have we planned for it? are going on, the question is, have we planned for it? Are we watching what's going on? I think that this is where we spend an enormous amount of our time, is planning and anticipating the future growth and development of the city. Like Andrew said, we started in 19 and 20 on this particular area. And I will tell you that the discussions we had, and I'm going to be a little bit more blunt about them, is it started, that we were pushing on this issue, that this is something that we're going to have to address because we were told that they, that funding does not follow speculation. And so we submitted a $25 million grant anticipating the growth and development of MM, which most people don't even know. And we didn't get it saying, yeah, you guys are crazy, it's not going to grow. We've anticipated what we were going to do. So this package right here started with, and Andrew, you'll recall this, we were told after all those announcements, well, let's just go out there and make it a little, put bump outs. And we're like, and Karen, you'll recall the conversation, we're sitting there going, listen, this is not going to work. We're going to be blowing that thing out. We're going to be filling it up. Because we know we have a business model, and it is a business model, that we're working with the development community to create an economic impact in that area. And so when we did that, and then it went to three lanes. We're like, we, we want five. So we've been driving and being a part of that overall discussion, and that's how we arrived at it. And so this is part of the governor's cost share program. So what this looks like is 4.2 million that we're borrowing. I think it's 10.2 million. We've got $6 million coming from the governor's cost share program. It's not costing our citizens. You asked me one time, how much is that highway going to cost us? Our firm belief by the time we get there is it won't cost us $300,000. We'll believe we'll have the whole thing funded, and it won't cost our taxpayers locally a nickel. And so I think that that's just being creative and being aggressively progressive and process relationships and trust. And Andrew and his staff and all of us, being creative and driving change, created that opportunity. And I thank the governor's office and Green County's office, but I think the visionary leadership of our staff to get us there because I think that that probably, I don't want to just pass it by because they've been dreaming, thinking about what that needed to be and driving change instead of just letting it happen. So.
Well said.
Thank you.
Anybody want to follow that? All right. With that, please remember this is a first read. If you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. All right. Moving on to 18 on our agenda. This is a resolution. This is 22-R-20, a resolution of the city council to apply a change order to the original contract with the Ross Construction Group for the new builds building. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 22-R-20, please.
Motion.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Sir, you're still standing there. You want to talk some more?
I am, I'm here.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This change order really cleans up. You can remember the council approved this almost a year ago to go into contract with Ross Construction for our building. It was just over five and a half million. So from that point to today, some of the costs have grown just in inflation alone, the cost to deliver the project, the materials. But we've added a few things too. So there's a little bit of an expansion to the parking. I would say a little bit more quality into some of the site work. About 190,000 in this change order, 3% overall in the project. We think that's pretty good, given all the environmental constraints that are going on right now, all things considered. Funding-wise, we've secured that in our bonds. So we have five and a half million. We've spent to date already more than this change order is in that project. So we wouldn't have to obligate any more local funds. We can cover it with the debt funds that we've secured.
Are we still on track with the project?
Yes.
Was I supposed to ask that question?
Yeah, it, well, it's never on time. We're a growing department, you know, growing city. So we're, we're putting people in closets, sharing offices and all those things. So we're always a little bit behind. But, you know, we're, right now, I think the last estimate, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, but March of next year.
March '24.
So probably, probably three months later than what we had originally hoped, but doing pretty good.
You're, you're not upset by that delay?
Well, I mean, sure, you, you want there, but you understand.
We're going to try to beat that. It's kind of like the GPS in your car.
Yeah, you got, you got to beat it. That's the truth, man.
All right, fair enough. Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I've got a, a question, actually, Andrew. What, what was the low voltage cabling alternative? Can you?
So, great question. That, that stems from like us volunteering to do a lot of the work, trying to save on costs. There was a thought in the beginning that we could handle running all the cabling for networking, the computers, all those things. And, you know, once we took a look at that scope, I think Chris was like, I don't think so. I was like, well, what if I help? And he's like, no, still no. So we added that back into the, the contract. Makes a lot of sense for them to do that while they're doing the other electrical work.
Sure, sure. No, I understand.
We were going to let them out there on a weekend to do this, like as a hobby?
I've been there before on job.
Sure.
We're going to get all our resources together. It's a city work day.
I mean, I will say, just to commend my staff, they've been working out there probably since late in the fall on the site. And their work, probably undervalued because I think we probably saved a million dollars just in, when they finish up that site and prepare it for someone to build a, a building on it, we probably saved close to a million dollars there.
Other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. So I'd like to call to vote a resolution of the city council to apply a change order to the original contract with the Ross Construction Group for a new builds building. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number 19 on our agenda. This is 22-R-21, a resolution of the city council supporting a request to various officials, committees, and subcommittees for earmarked funds for the state of Missouri and federal government for the purposes of wastewater improvements. Any motion and a second to take up resolution 22-R-21?
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of taking this motion up?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? What would a meeting be without talking about wastewater?
Correct.
Stinky.
You can't leave it out. The, the purpose behind this resolution, Mr. Cameron mentioned, the ARPA funds and the availability of funding at the federal and state level. I would say almost every week, we're learning about new funding mechanisms that are available by request, through allocation, either through the federal government or the state government or other agencies at the state level. What they require is some level of support from the local body as a part of the application. So this really is kind of a general statement of consent saying, we want you to go pursue free money. And I, I got to commend Megan because I think I learned about this probably an hour before the agenda was due. And I was like, hey, by the way, she loves that. Great work. But, so even today, we learn new things. So I'm going to ask for an audible by the council here. We have, for the purpose of wastewater improvement. So a phone call I had today was, there's other funding places available for infrastructure. So I think what I would ask the council to consider, and Megan, if we can, to amend the, the resolution to say, in place of wastewater improvements, infrastructure improvements, if allowed.
It's like a park?
No.
Just, I was just trying to get you all excited, Jared.
All right, so to do that.
Infrastructure being water, wastewater, utilities, et cetera.
Do we need to amend the resolution?
He, well, he's not passed. So he can do that.
So he can do it without?
If they want to.
Make an amendment.
Want to make an amendment. If they want to approve that, then he can do that right now, yeah.
So you are requesting to make an amendment to add in infrastructure?
Yeah, replace wastewater for the purpose of infrastructure improvements versus wastewater because I think we're going to have the opportunity to apply for earmarked funds for streets, for water, for other utilities.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yes.
You don't want infrastructure and wastewater. You just want?
I think infrastructure covers wastewater.
All right. All right, so, procedure ruling. I would entertain a motion to make the amendment as suggested by Mr. Nelson to replace wastewater with infrastructure.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of replacing infrastructure for wastewater?
Aye.
Sorry, guys. Wait, wait, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so it's officially changed to infrastructure. Are you changing anything else?
No.
All right. Are there questions about this issue from council or discussion? Seeing none, as this is a resolution, I will call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of 22-R-21, please vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes, six to zero. Thank you. Moving on to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit here and I watch these agenda items go by, sometimes on the first 10. And I, I, I do wonder if the community, when watching that, thinks, are they even paying attention to what's going on or watching what's on those items? We, we, those second reads, they've already been out there for two weeks. And so we've had the opportunity to discuss it. So I just want to let you know that usually we don't just fly through the first read. Like, does anybody even talk? A lot of that happens on the first read, and so a lot of it on the second read. So I just, I commend the staff and everyone that puts this agenda together and gets it ready. I sometimes think that it just looks very easy. There's a lot of work that I watch go on each and every day.
Or it's in between the two weeks. Like, how many times do I show up at the, all of us, how many do we, times do we show up and say, explain this to them?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Talk slower.
Yeah, I think there's just, I think there's probably, and I appreciate the comments regarding the, the high-density question. I think we spoke, we had a development meeting, and I just want to commend everyone that was able to be there last Thursday night for that event, and the staff that pulled that together. But one of the things I made mention of is I think what happens at this arena and this, this stage is what is seen is what gets approved. I think what is missed is what does not even make it to this room. Because the staff does a remarkable job of working to make sure that what is presented, number one, when they walk into that building to sit around the table with a developer or any development, that it's something that they can put their name behind and actually say they recommend. And so there are certain developments and certain things that never make it to this chamber because either they don't meet the criteria or the effort. They're not trying to grow for the sake of growing. They're trying to do it the right way. We have a mission, vision, and values that reflect that. And I stand behind it. It's not a feather in their cap. It's something for them to sit there and put their best foot forward and to present to you what that is. And so they work very hard. And I look forward to having that discussion regarding high density or just density in general. I think we have a good response. And I think that's something that we should respond to overall. I, I could give an answer tonight. It just wouldn't be appropriate because I'd like to discuss it with staff. But it's just decisions that have been made in the past that have led to some of the housing decisions that are driving to, to the future. But I just want to, I want to commend staff for a job well done on these packets and these agendas. And, and what, the, the hard work you put into it and the foresight. We've hired, hired a team that's actually driven to guide the growth and development of this community. I think Jared, you and your team have done a remarkable job of showcasing in your own arena how we do this every single day. And so there's a lot of foresight. Two years of planning for that, two years of planning for widening MM. It's not just something we throw together for the sake of growing a community. Something of being at the very forefront. We've been planning water and wastewater since 2017. And so being ahead of things, I think that, my staff say it to me a lot, is like, are we ever going to, where's this day, David, that we're ever going to take this? When we get this done, we're going to get caught up and we'll take a break. I'm not really sure now. But I just want to commend staff. When I see these agendas and I see it that big, and the work that we do and the special meetings that this council allows us to have, I mean it when I say it, when I, when I was at the development meeting and I, and I presented it, I presented it again at the Springfield Contractors Association this morning. One of the strengths this city possesses, one is its staff, and number two is the, the alignment that this elected body has and the work that they do that allows us to work in a organized manner, in a planned manner. And you let us, you allow us to do that very well. And with that, I want to commend the staff for the development community meeting the other night with the, with the development community. It was a great event. I think there was about 180 people there. Steffi Weaver, you're a rock star. I'm sure she took this week off. I don't blame her if she did. But all the staff that supported, just to thank the community and the development community is seeing over $500 million invested over the last two years. But to see how that's impacted the city's overall budget and how that has impacted our, our community to raise our sales taxes is, that, that do fund our efforts. And so, and I'm happy to report, you know, it's, it was three years ago today that we ran a, a one-cent ballot measure that failed. And yesterday, or tomorrow will be three years, I stood in front of staff and was just devastated to, to see the impact of that. Because I knew we needed to take care of our public safety efforts. And I felt like I'd fallen short as a leader as to how I packaged it and put it before the community. And so this Thursday, I'm happy to report that, that, that story's different. Because our, we'll, we'll be rolling out the first payments from the sales tax that voters approved in August. It's hard to explain, but it takes two fiscal quarters to go through the approval process, get to the, to the measure, and then be able to implement it. So we're going to roll that out this week. And so our police officers, they'll be receiving their, their increase. Fire will be receiving their increase. All the employees will be receiving their 5% COLA increase. The retirement benefit, adding the new officers, and all of this. We will roll that out to the community. Keeping our promises is kind of going to be our campaign, is we have a budget that you can see online that those funds are isolated. They're not kept blended into the rest of it. And I just want to thank the community for their support last August. Jared, your team did a great job again today. I think that what you did and what we said last August was, we keep our promises and look at how the parks has utilized those funds. I think it's actually just a, a model for how those taxes should be applied. And we should be held accountable that that's what we're going to do with them. So I'm looking forward to seeing our employees receive those funds. I definitely think it puts us much, at a much more competitive level. And to see the number of people that we're hiring, we're bringing them on. And so I'm excited for that, for our community. I want to thank Green County today. We, Andrew mentioned the intergovernmental agreement. So we've worked very hard in our relationships to help bring a partnership into the MM widening so that it was not born only by the citizens of Republic. In fact, now to the point of where we're looking at 300,000. But Green County did step up with an agreement that we're going to be bringing to you on the 19th. It's $300,000 a year for five years. So it's a $1.5 million commitment. I just want to publicly thank them. This is the first time I've seen their investment when it comes to this and to our community. And I want to thank them. And the last point I want to make tonight is, I know what the last, oh, I got two points. One is a third, I need to report a, in accordance with our purchasing policy, that I'm going to have, we're, I made an approval and expenditure up to $25,000 to up to, update the Microsoft license. Those that have been inside our email system, as all the council have seen, it, Chris has lost sleep for weeks because the email system has been absolutely janky. So anything that goes out to a Gmail account comes right back to us. He and his staff have worked very hard to try to do this. This is not the first time it's happened to us. But in a business that's growing this fast, we have to have better reliability. I've never seen it quite like this where it, it just shuts down this, to this level. But this is an expenditure that he said he needed to help him address this need. We authorized it according to our purchasing policy. I'm required to report it at the next public meeting. We will make the, the budget amendment to reflect that. We have the cash position. This is not going to be something that exceeds our revenue. We actually have revenue to cover it. So I feel like it's a very safe position. But it's something, whenever your teammate says, I need this to, to perform and to get you all back going, we did that. The last point I wanted to make, at the last council meeting, we talked about the train noise. And there was a question about whether there being sa, was it a safety issue? I want to remind this body, and I brought it for you tonight, just, it's called Exhibit A. I, just as a reminder, we actually did a train safety study in this community. And I brought it to you. Most may not even been on the council, but we did this in 2016. The Missouri Highway Commission, or Highway and Transportation Department, with the Railroad Commission to study through our town. It talked about closures of certain railways. So it was the, the, the noise, the, what do they call the, what do they call it?
Quiet zone.
Quiet zone, noise ordinance. I was going, the quiet zone and tran, transportation safety, sa, safety studies are two different animals. So safety was already analyzed. And so they are going to be doing safety improvements along the railroad. I think they're going to let that bid out in November. So they are going to be putting fences around some of the areas around schools. And so some of the things that were addressed in the safety study were already in place. So I just want to make it clear that when the question was brought up as to, this is a, this is a safety issue, I just want you all to understand that we've actually done a lot of due diligence to address both safety and the other effort was to address the question of whether the train or quiet zone was warranted. So when it comes to safety, that's already been analyzed. We were not doing this effort on a safety analysis. It was more about the quiet zone analysis. Because safety has already been addressed, and there is a bid going out that will address the safety aspect. So we will release both studies. I'll make sure there's access to both. But just to make sure, delineate between the two, this, safety is being considered and always being considered when it comes to the railroad. But the quiet zone discussion is a completely different dynamic that goes all the way back to 2009. And basically, your vote basically kind of said, listen, is this something that's a priority now? Or is this something we need to take up? Because safety has already been addressed in this study. So I just want to clarify that tonight. And again, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel.
Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Ray. I'll be quick. I'd just like to say, I really appreciate, I had a chance to go to the job fair, when Republic had that job fair. I think it was our first annual job fair. But I had a lot of great conversations. I got to le, meet a lot of local businesses, really get a feel for, you know, what they, they had done. A lot of great feedback about people that were excited to be there. So I was excited to. The builds event the other night, that was a, a very great event. So I would like to thank all the sponsors, the city staff that put that on. That was a great evening. And again, led to some great conversation and great contacts. But other than that, I'd just like to thank all of the candidates that put their name on the ballot for us today. And, and thank you, staff, for all of the, the excellent preparation and the packets and everything that was presented to council this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? As mayor, I would like to say, Jared, I know that you were the one up here speaking tonight, but I know it was your entire team to put that together. I know you've all been working on it for a very long time. Jared, you did a great job with the team. You gave them great information. So thank you very much. Andrew, same for you. You keep on showing up and telling us that this MM's going to cost less and less and less for our citizens. I know it's your team. I know it, you, you're doing a great job leading this team of providing all of this information to us. So thank you for being the figureheads, but thank you to the teams putting it together. And with that, we have executive session tonight. Because why would we want to stop? We're having too much fun.
Been a long day.
No further action, other than announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. Tonight, we will be covering number one, RSMO 610.02.1.1, pending and/or potential litigation, closed session, closed vote, closed record. And three, RSMO 610.02.1.3, hiring, firing, promotion, or discipline personnel, closed session, closed vote, closed record. I would entertain a motion and a second for adjournment into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman?
Aye.